I'm ready to go.
Welcome to our budget hearing of June the 16th, 2016. We're here to hear from the public on the budget that has been presented. At this time, if we could, I'd like for us to stand and we'll do a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everyone that's in the audience that has taken time out of their schedule and their lives to come down here and see what is going on with their government and the budget that is taking place this year. Father, we just ask you for faith, for hope, for help, and guidance to make sure that we're doing the right thing for all the people in Manatee County. Father, thank you for all that you do and for being here with us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Kelty Administrator, you want to take it from here, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, tonight's public hearing is not one of the required public hearings according to state statute. Statutorily, the 67 counties in the state of Florida are required to have two public hearings on their budget, and those two public hearings are scheduled for the month of September. We have had discussions in prior years that in September, the budget process, for the most part, is over. You start reviewing the budget beginning of June through July. You set the tentative tax rates end of July, beginning of August. Term notices go out, and then September comes along as required by state statute. There's two public hearings to adopt the final budget, and that is typically when the public is invited in to talk, when the process is at the conclusion. So this board has opted to have a public hearing in the month of June so that before we get to the finish line, we actually hear from the public what they might like and not like in the proposed budget that's in the public domain as we speak. And so tonight's effort is probably, we are probably, I'll find out in another week, I think we're probably the only county in the state of Florida that actually has a public hearing in the month of June. But, be that as it may, it is a hearing to hear from the public about the budget, the operating budget, the capital budget, that's in the public domain, and hear from them about any thoughts they may have that may alter the document before you. So with that, we're prepared to, do we have any presentation material that you'd like to share before we get started?
Do we have a PowerPoint ready? Okay. We could go through that real quick, if you'd like.
Why don't you take them through the very summary information about the budget?
The first slide you see before you is an example in history of our taxable property values since the year 2007. As you can see, 2007, we were at $34.4 billion. Today, in the midst of slowly recovering, currently, we're at $30.5. The countywide millage rate has remained the same since '08, only in 2016 and '17 did you take the millage that was already in existence for the geo-bonded debt, and you shifted over the small amount now that the debt is getting toward the end of its life, and it's been shifted but maintained the lower millage rate. As you can see here in this chart, FY '16 adopted, the total millage for countywide, including unincorporated in the geo-bond, is $7.0435, and it is again today, this year, in the budget before you as recommended. There is also a, oh, I'm sorry, there is also for Palmer MSTU, the same millage being levied at .2546. The revenue by source, the net budget for FY '17 is $568 million, with 35% of it coming from property taxes at $200 million. The next, charges for services at 36%, $202 million. Licenses at $82 million, 14%, intergovernmental, state, federal, and local opportunities at $51 million or 9%, and other small taxes coming in at $33 million. This chart depicts, by state category, how the use of the funds that you have received, itemizing general government at 14% or $82 million, public safety, $158 million or 28% of your budget, the physical environment, $156 million at 28%, public transportation at 6% or $34 million, human services at $24 million or 4%, culture and recreation, $17 million, 3%, and capital outlay at $49 million with another category of 48.
Jan, may I ask a question just for the public? Can you explain the difference between public safety and physical environment, since they're both at approximately 28%?
The public safety involves the sheriff, the EMS, your line item, as far as for the environment. The fiscal environment also includes your lands, your buildings, your other items that you're taking care of too, that you're having to maintain. Those are the two differences. We went backwards, Sheila, I think.
That's right.
And that's the conclusion. We just wanted to give you a brief overview of where your funding is coming in at and the taxes that are held within the recommended budget.
With that, Madam Chair, we would recommend that you hear from the public that time out of their lives today to come chat with you.
All right. We'll go ahead and open public comment. I have two people that have signed up. If I pronounce your name incorrectly, please don't hate me for it. The first one is Abby McCrum. Just for girls. You'll have three minutes, please.
Hey, Abby.
Hi. I think that's Ms. Becky, and Abby.
With your permission, I'd like to go first. I know I signed up after her.
Yes, you did, okay.
Thank you. I have the annual reports.
Please state your name.
My name is Becky Kennes. I'm the CEO of Just for Girls, and it's a real privilege to come before the Board of County Commissioners and the staff leadership. Thank you for this opportunity to bring our annual report for your consideration and review. I'll hand this to you and ask you if you can send that around. We want to especially thank you for trusting some of the county's funds through the Children's Services to Just for Girls for these proactive prevention education programs. In government, much of what we do often is very reactive in trying to solve problems that already exist, and the best use of our county's dollars is in these prevention education programs, where every dollar invested in our children is a savings of more than $10 for reduced jail care, social services, and welfare costs. It's the best investment our county can make when we invest in the future by reducing crime and reducing some of the treatment services and jail care, which are so much more expensive than the prevention education programs that we do proactively to reduce risks and improve protective factors that improve the safety and the well-being of our citizens in Manatee County. You'll see the outcomes in our annual report that describe the improvements in knowledge, attitudes, and behavior for the children that we serve. We've got three Leadership and Learning Centers in Manatee County, serving more than 500 children and their families every year. We've received national recognition from the U.S. Department of Education, the U.S. Department of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, and a Governor's Best Practices Award through their Drug and Crime Policy Office. We recently won Nonprofit of the Year from the Tampa Bay Business Journal, and just Tuesday, we were awarded by the School Board with a Model School Award for our Positive Behavior Support Program. So I wanted to introduce you to one of the students in our Alternative Education Program, Abby McCrum, and I wanted to first introduce her parents that are with us here tonight. Her mother, Danielle Alec, is with us, and her stepfather, David Baraby. And we want to thank them also for trusting us in the care of the children that are brought to us, as well as the way we've stewarded the dollars. We've also been great stewards of the children that have been trusted in our care, and you'll hear that for yourself when you hear from Abby directly. The awards that we receive pale in comparison to the personal experiences and achievement from the girls that we serve. So thank you again for all you're doing.
Thank you, it's Becky.
Thank you.
Abby.
Hi. I'm.
You're done.
That wasn't so bad, was it?
Ignore that, Amy, don't worry.
It just flew right by, didn't it?
All right.
You can pull it down.
You can pull it down.
There you go.
Okay. This was my graduation speech for eighth grade. In my elementary school years, I was considered something of a prodigy. I was an A-plus student. I drew well. I was creative. I was smart. The perfect kid, that was me. I was told every day how successful I was going to be. Halfway through third grade, I started having oddly profound thoughts. I started to question everything from religion and afterlife to molecules and disorders. I would sit still and think and think for hours. Everyday life, which I used to find entertaining and interesting, just became unbearably boring. I stopped paying attention in class, and I spent the majority of my day and night on the computer, where I would write stories of a beautiful, smart girl who belonged in the world. I wanted her to be me. My grades dropped dramatically. My teachers were upset with me. I felt ashamed, but overall, I felt lost. I continued to get failing grades, especially when I started middle school. I no longer felt content with who I naturally was. The media, with their beautifully photoshopped girls, made me feel like something about me was wrong. I felt like I was the ugly one in a world of beautiful people. I thought I was alone. I came to Just for Girls in seventh grade. I was honestly all over the place. But the staff at Just for Girls stood by me. They didn't look at me for what I am on the outside, but for who I am on the inside. Just for Girls stood by me through it all. I even stayed for my eighth-grade year. I have pride to stand in front of you all and say what I truly am. I am smart. I am beautiful. I am not alone, and I am not lost. I am successful. I am perfect just the way I am. I do not wish to be anyone but myself. I am me, and I am proud to be me.
Good job. Amy, thank you. And by the way, I'm sure that we all agree that you are beautiful and you are perfect just the way you are. Thank you. Good job. Thank you for reminding us why we are all up here. Thank you for that. Thank you. Is there anyone else? That's the only two that signed up to speak. Is there anyone else from the public? If so, one at a time, and just let us have your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Amy, keep it up.
Catherine Edwards, hello again.
Oh, Abby. Sorry, Abby. Sorry. Start her clock over, we messed up. Start over, sorry. Catherine, we were.
Okay, Catherine Edwards.
Ms. Redd.
Hi. I wanted to touch upon some things the county has been addressing in their meetings over the last couple of weeks. One is the infrastructure of sales tax, and in the discussion as to whether it was going to be placed on the ballot for voter approval, there was the issue of whether it was going to be up for 15 or 30 years, and I've never really heard anybody discuss that one way or the other. It seems like the default position is 15 years. It'd be nice to have some clarification on that. It'd also be nice to have some identification of other fund sources should, that would be entertained by the commissioners if it were to fail voter approval. And thirdly, on infrastructure sales tax, it's irresponsible for the county to be including vehicles for the various departments that is currently included in their operating budgets. It should be addressed for more pressing needs. With respect to the Department of Public Safety EMS ambulance services, there has a shortage of ambulances has been identified, which some wanted to include within the infrastructure sales tax for replenishment of those vehicles. It's not clear to me how the private sector ambulance services play into that demand for new vehicles from the Department of Public Safety, and I'd appreciate some clarification on exactly what assets, what factors are used to determine whether a 911 call goes to the Department of Public Safety EMS service or to a private ambulance service. Regarding a chartered county, nobody likes that. It seems that municipalities don't like it because they have to cede some of their authorities to the county commissioners, and constitutionals don't like it for the same reason. But as I've stated previously, most of the counties that are in an urban environment are already chartered, and it's something that the county needs to be considering. Some of the advantages of being a chartered county is the structure, in a non-chartered county, the structure of county government is defined by the Florida Constitution and state statutes, and the only way the governance structure of a non-chartered county can be changed is by amending the state constitutions or state laws. Charter counties, on the other hand, have a governance structure defined in their charters that can be amended by county voters as they determine the need for change, which puts the county government in the hands of the taxpayers within that district. Thank you so much.
You might talk to Robert Smith, the Director of Public Safety. He can probably answer a lot of the questions that you just brought up.
Thank you.
So you know. Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to come forward, please?
Good evening, Lynda Neely. We are here at your budget processing, and I see we're going to be sunsetting some of our debt, and instead of giving the taxpayers any relief, the bond issued millage is being proposed by the administrator to switch it to operating. It's on the sheet in his documents that were posted on the webpage. But maybe it's time for the county, I know you like to have a reserve, the state makes school districts have a 3% reserve. You all have a policy of 20%. Perhaps we need to stop saving the taxpayers' money that they give you, you know, and you kind of do take it, because if we don't pay our taxes, you sell the certificates on our property, and, you know, after two years, if we don't pay them, we can lose them. But that 20% maybe needs to actually be spent, not saved for that rainy day. And it's a shame that you have a policy that when public property is damaged, you don't report it to the police department, so that the sheriff could find out who the perpetrator was and perhaps recover the cost of those assets that are damaged. I think you need to take care of that. Trust me, I have the email, be happy to share it. Your staff said you do not turn it in to the sheriff, and I called the sheriff's public records department, and they have no, no reports coming out of Manatee County of county damaged property. So you keep taking dollars from us, and I don't think we have a really good husbandry of those dollars. And it was shocking to me that when I went to the financial committee meetings, there was no word of health care, and I think it's the third line in Ed's statement tonight that he found a way to cover the health care for the community health care, not indigent health care, community health care. And on that note, I think it would be wrong of this county to open a clinic and partner even with the school district to give special health care to the employees, that if you're going to do that, then I think anybody in the county should be able to walk into that clinic. I don't think we should be doing that. That's not our obligation to do that for select people in the county. So I think you need to look at the budget that's being presented to you. I think you need a better understanding of what the administrator is proposing. And I liked it when I first moved to the county, the commissioners were responsible for their districts, they didn't have an administrator, and they were more close to the people and the needs of the people that elected them for their seats. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Anyone else from the public want to come forward? By the way, Lynda, just to real quickly touch base, there has not been any discussion with this board to do any clinic with the school district or anybody else. In fact, it's not even a topic that we're even discussing at all. So just, I just wanted you to know, what was in the Bradenton Herald didn't come from this board at all.
Good evening, Glenge, Blaina taxpayer, and community activist. As I go over this budget, I cannot possibly go over everything in detail in three minutes, so I'm just going to highlight some of the things that I think need to be addressed. One of them, several months ago, I was over here for the lighting for the soccer fields, about the time Marble Pool needed some funds as well. So you went ahead and approved that at that time, and I find out now that in 2021, we're giving another $575,000 for lighting. So how can we project that far ahead when we're already spending $525,000? Is that working?
It works.
It works?
Give him a minute to get it.
Okay. So we're putting $575,000 in 2021, and we can't budget for Rabonia Community Center? We can't budget for affordable housing, but yet we can project five years ahead on lighting for soccer fields in Lakewood Ranch? I have a problem with that. And the Northside Pool, what exactly are we getting for four and a half million dollars? I haven't seen or heard anything about it. So this must be quite a project that is in the works. And getting back for, for health care, you know, that, that whole Corpus deal was a nightmare from the beginning with, and I see we have $6.9 million. The whole contract with the hospital, with the Manatee Memorial, they have not lived up to any part of that contract. So why you keep renewing it and giving them money is beyond this citizen's comprehension because they were supposed to give us a long-term plan. They didn't. They were supposed to collaborate with other health providers in the county. They didn't. I have done records requests on the meetings of all, everything that was in the contract. They have not lived up to the contract, and we still do business with them. They're a private-owned company that really, we don't need to fund them. And to make the icing on the cake, we send that $6 million out of state. The checks are not even cashed within Manatee County within the scope of the contract, and Mr. Palmer knows that. And that, that contract should be null and void. We should ask for the money back and at least funnel it through a local bank. Thank you.
Mr. Gibleena, you know, some of what you said, you know, is not accurate. It's been discussed with you many, many times in the past. Just to touch base, you talk about the soccer fields in Lakewood Ranch and a pool, those are all done with impact fees, has nothing to do with Rabonia. It depends on the district where those impact fees are taken in, which you know. So when you get up to speak, I mean, if you, you know, I know you like to make the public think one thing, but give accurate information, please, because that's not accurate, and you know it. Anyone else from the public like to come forward? Are you sure? Okay, not seeing anyone else. Commissioner Whitmore.
A couple of things. First of all, while we're on Glenn, welcome back, Glenn.
There you go.
I know you had a fun time. There's an organization called the Healthcare Alliance that meets once every month, that I've been along to since the day it started. It's the Health Department, Rural Health, any, any other medical people in the community we all meet. And just from sitting there, the hospital, the Health Department, Rural Health have gotten together, got a grant, and they're actually going out to communities for the high-risk patients, like the diabetic patients and stuff like that. They're working with One Stop, they're working real well with the Health Department and Rural Health. So, so again, to say that they're not doing what they said they're doing, that is totally not true. You can talk to Dr. Conard, he's at every one of the meetings, and he'll be, I'm sure he can inform you what's going on with that. Catherine brought up, you know, whether, whatever happens, happens with the sales tax, but other funding sources. There are other funding sources, and some of us that have been mayors and city commissioners in the municipalities know that there are. There's stormwater utility fees, franchise fees, and I'm just thinking of what I know of in all the cities, and they all have them. Business registration license, communication tax, I think it is, and the other, only other funding source would be a millage increase. So there are other funding sources if, if this doesn't happen, if we had to, and if we decided not to, then we would just decrease our services, or we would, we laid off 300 in 2009, and if we did that, we'd have to, what year was it? Nine, seven, eight? We'd have to do it again. We'd just have to have layoffs, and we'd cut back on services. We cut back on libraries during that time, the hours, and we still haven't increased them. We've kept kind of the same staff, because Ed's policy, any new position since the layoff have to be replaced with a funding source to pay them and not property taxes. So I think we've been pretty prudent, but there are other options, Kathleen, if this doesn't pass, there are hard decisions to make as an elected official. In the cities, they don't seem to have as much of a problem doing it, and I don't ever remember any citizens coming to our cities when we did all of these, actually, and complained about it. And I don't, and when I've attended city meetings, I've never heard anybody complain about these fees, but for some reason, the county, they have, we've talked about the business tax before, and we've got a lot of opposition. So there are other ways to fund the government if we have to, if we run short. That's all.
Commissioner DeSabanino.
The, the business tax, we did that exercise, and the, the cost to operate it was more than the money we would bring in, so that was upside down. So, but I know that having a registry is important. I have a question, and I appreciate this preliminary flagged items list, excuse me, and there's three items under the share of 20, 21, and 22, and the first one is what we discussed last night, the 976, 741, that's been flagged. I, I understand. I, I understand that. But the SROs, 415 is flagged, that's not in the budget currently? That's been flagged or that was baked in?
It is, it is in the budget.
Yeah, it was in the budget.
So it's here on the list, though, for flagged?
I flagged it.
She wants to be with the school board and all that, right?
So it's, is it or isn't funded?
It's funded.
It's in the budget.
There are items that were flagged that are funded, but commissioners flagged it.
Because they didn't.
And I should have highlighted those for you.
Okay. And then the same thing regarding the sheriff's FRS increase, 242, 049, is that funded?
Yes, it was not funded because we got it right as we came to your budget hearing. So I let, we put it on the list so that you'd be aware there's a discrepancy between the recommended and where you're going to end up. So that's why.
That's funded. The FRS?
No, we're going to have to find it.
It was, it was an addition.
It was an addition at the, yeah. There was a calculation adjustment.
Okay.
It'll be added to the 796.
So 796, 741 plus 242, 049.
Correct.
And, and then the amount of money that he returns, that he requests back, is, is that noted anywhere just as a placeholder?
No, that's, that's to be determined at the end of the year. And we have, we have committed to, my recommendation was to allow the sheriff to have that money back.
So we are committed to that or?
Excuse me?
Is that committed or is that up for discussion at the end of the year?
Well, the board could make a different decision. But it's, we have had a record of providing that money back to the sheriff. And I have had a discussion with the sheriff to allow him to keep that money at the end of this year to take care of those items that he has.
The helicopter fund.
Helicopter, yes, and other items.
Okay. So, so as I know it now, you, those two items are in the flag list to either find homes, a resource for them, or we have to find another means to fund those, correct?
What two items?
796, 741, and 242, 049, correct?
Those have been flagged. They're looking, yes, they're looking for funding for them.
Okay.
Well, it was yesterday.
That is it. Thank you.
Commissioner Banat.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty big list of items that got flagged. The reality is, we're going to find out July 1, what our revenues are, the likelihood of them going up by 4.2 million from what is projected. It's probably pretty slim. So this is, for me, the first time for a budget, that we've had this much ask, additional ask. It's not like we're going to be able to accommodate all of this. So you're going to have to, we're not going to talk about this again till when? When is the?
August 2nd. We will, we will take this list. We will see what the property value number comes in at as July 1. We will go back through all the other revenues and validate all of them again to see if any of the other revenues change, any of our other estimates within the budget relative to revenues this year and expenditures this year to see if the number we have projected to be the ending fund balance this year changes. So there's an awful lot of validation that needs to take place besides just what the July 1 property tax number is. And we will bring all of that back to you on August 2nd.
Well, just if you would, keep in mind, I mean, we did flag these things for a reason. I think the majority of them are flagged because the commissioners would really like to see them in the budget if possible. I know that means we might have to.
True. I just want to talk about some things.
I'm sorry?
Some things are just discussion items, not.
True.
I don't have a decency to put it in the budget necessarily.
Well, for me, something, anything that I flagged, I did for a reason. I didn't do it just because I wanted to talk about them.
That's a reason.
Yeah, it is. Well, okay, I just think that, you know, we, we didn't prioritize any of these. They're tough issues. And, you know, coming up with the funding is not going to be easy because it is an extensive list. So I guess what I'm saying is going to have to start looking at the list of things that are funded to see if you want to strike some of those to pay for some of these. I don't think.
We go through this every year.
Just bigger than I ever remember at a 4.2 million dollars.
And not all of these are property tax funded related. We just put this together today to get it to you. We will mix these up by the various different funding sources that they will come from.
Okay.
Potentially.
Commissioner Whitmore, can I let the sheriff speak first?
Am I not going to, am I, of course, I'm not going to.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, of course. What am I going to say? He's got his gun. What, are you going to say no?
Sheriff, hi.
Sheriff, commissioners, Mr. Hanzecker and Ms. Brewer. Now I'm confused because all the information that we received yesterday that was on the piece of paper that I received from the county office, the 242, I think it is for the FRS increase, you were going to fund. It is funded.
I thought.
Right.
Well, we are, but they got to find the money.
Let me define. We received the 242 right before we came in to give you the recommended budget. I didn't have time to change the recommended budget. Historically, because that's part of your personnel cost, it's unavoidable. You have that. We have to come up with that. It's only on this list because I'm reconciling between the recommended and now. That's.
We plan on taking care of that. But it just wasn't in the number you submitted or the number we submitted because neither one of us were aware of it.
It just came in the day before.
Okay. And then the 415, that's also already in our budget?
Yes.
That we already had in there.
That's right. That's right. That's funded already. But it was flagged.
Because.
I flagged it.
Somebody wants to talk about it.
Yeah, I flagged it because I was, the reason I flagged it was because I thought we should talk about whether or not we needed to take that 415 and just give it to the sheriff's department rather than have it designated for the school.
And let the school pay for that.
Right. That's why I flagged it. But it's in your budget. It's just a matter of how it's going to be used.
We, we will keep you informed, Sheriff.
All right.
After they meet with the school board. Oh, dear.
They'll meet with them.
Is it my turn now?
Yes, ma'am. You can go now. He's going with his gun.
Just remember, he's back there, though. Remember the emergency, the dispatch for increased call volume and the EMS flow positions? You know, that was a big public safety issue. A lot of these were important, but from what I'm getting, and I think we've had higher than this, Ed. This, this, this flag.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you probably weren't here yet. Oh, yeah. Well, during the recession, oh my God, it was terrible. But.
We, we have the flagged list for every year. We could show you the amounts.
And it's been high at times, especially during the hard times.
Seems to me we've been able to make good progress and that's why I thought it was.
But what happened?
It has in the past.
Yeah, what happened, though, is that we all got to remember, whatever budget was presented the other day, now we have to look at this 4.2 million and figure out, are we going to cut in our current budget that was presented to us that, you know, they thought, like Ed said, it was what we thought we would want or that needed to be done versus how are we going to, what are we going to take away to do this? Because there's only other, one other way and that's a millage increase. And I don't think we want to do that. So we'll just have to figure it out. Or they will.
This is just for your information. We have until August 2nd to work through this to see how things shake out. You don't have to make a decision now. Every one of these items is important to somebody. But we don't have to make up our mind today.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. July 1st, we will have an idea when the property rate comes out, how much we increased?
How much is it, increase or decrease? At this point in time, based on the June 1 number, the overall countywide property tax rate, based on, well, the value of property went up by 8.88 percent. We prepared the budget before that number was known and we based the budget on 9%. So we're over the estimate by point two. So if that number holds at 8.88, we would have to reduce our spending before we ever address these items. We would like to think that the July 1 number will be a little higher than the 8.88.
It wasn't last year. It wasn't last year.
Last year it was lower.
Yeah.
It was just lower. Yeah.
But we've had different numbers throughout the year with regards to.
We did.
The estimated value of property increases, real estate reports you've got.
But other revenues have the potential of going up. There's hundreds of different revenues that we will be looking at besides property taxes. And that's why statutorily, we have to have a balanced budget by July 15th. We take that July 1 property tax number, we take all the other revenues, we'll look at them, and we will file an amended budget by July 15th. And have that presented to you for your consideration when you revisit the budget.
Okay, I'm next. I think we understand the, the process that we have to go through. But there is one thing I want to address. I know that we have two commissioners up here on the dais that, one in particular that keeps mentioning a millage increase. I want the record to show, and I've said it a million times, I will not vote to increase millage. We are looking at a $15 million increase in revenue this year. We are also voting on the 21st of, of June as to whether or not to ask the people if they want to increase sales tax. And I will not even consider increasing the millage at the same time. So I'm just going on record. Hope everybody understands I will not be a part of that. So, you know, we can have, we can have it keep coming up, but I will not vote for it. Just want to make sure it's clear.
We, I've said this before, we penalize the operating budget. We penalize our ability, your ability to fund these items that you're looking at on this list because we pay for capital items in your operating budgets, thus restricting your ability to pay for these operating items.
True.
We borrowed $36 million to fund capital items. And the debt service on that $36 million is $3 million a year. That 3 million would have been available to fund this $4 million worth of things. But instead, we're paying debt service on capital items. So it's like we penalize both. We don't have enough capital money to fund capital. And the little bit of capital that we do fund, we fund with operating money thereby penalizing the operating budget by taking the money from operations to fund capital. So we're doing a disservice to both the capital side of the house and the operating side of the house. Someone brought up that we shouldn't pay for these vehicles that are funded in the operating budget. Every county that has a sales tax pays for the replacement of public safety vehicles, ambulants and patrol cars with a sales tax. That's what it's there for. It's a legitimate expenditure. But we pay for both replacement of ambulances and replacement of patrol cars. We pay for that with operating dollars. That's several million dollars a year that we penalize the operating budget by paying, using operating expense money to pay for something that should be a capital expense. And that's what every other county does that has a sales tax. They pay for those capital items with capital It's a shame we have to do that, but that's been the history here.
And good point. We, a couple of us up here just were commenting that visitors that come to Manatee County should help pay for that. That's, that is only fair.
And you, you have to charge the right fund, the right expenses. But since we haven't had that revenue, we go to where we do have the revenue and we take it out of the operating side. And the sheriff's budget, over the years, he hasn't been able to do what he needs to do. But he needs to buy replacement patrol cars and he takes that out of his operating budget. And that's well over a million dollars a year that he spends on replacing. Now, just in case somebody wants to say you should use impact fees, we do use impact fees when we have new deputies and the new vehicles and the new equipment are paid for with impact fees. When we have a new ambulance crew, the first ambulance we buy, we pay for with the impact fees. But when those vehicles wear out, you can't use impact fees to pay to replace them. Now you need another revenue source. And we don't have that other revenue source other than operating dollars. So we penalize the operating budget to replace the vehicles.
Commissioner Banat?
Yeah, what date do we set the tax rate on? Do we have to absolutely set the millage rate and adopt it? Is?
August 2nd.
August 2nd. All right. So that gets done on August 2nd as well.
Goodness.
And, you know, we've heard a lot in the last couple of days about capital requests, but also we heard a lot about operating requests. We heard a lot of stress in the workforce. And as I said, you know, the, this sales tax is an idea to try to shift some of the costs to a sales tax, the capital costs. But the operating costs, we're going to have to figure out something, how to do something different so it doesn't continue to grow because it's just not sustainable, from what I heard. So I, I hear this capital tax idea and I recognize that it came from a committee coming forward. But to me, I still have questions about it because from what I heard, from every department, you know, it was all about staff burnout, not having enough people to get the work done. You know, either we're going to lower the expected level of service, we're going to have to do something different. And that's going to be the challenge looking forward.
And the thing of it is, as long as we continue to grow, it's going to continue to grow. It's not going to go down, I wouldn't think. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What about the suggestion from the podium, what is the statutory requirement in reserves and how much we actually have to keep in the reserves?
There's no actual statutory requirement. It's a question of, how much money do you need for a rainy day? You take that to the, to your personal life at home. How much money do you need in your savings account? Can you ever have too much money in your savings account? What's the minimum amount you should keep in your savings account? We as a county have adopted this 20% rule. It's kind of the standard in the industry. It is a, it is an amount that is acceptable to the credit markets. It is why you, as the Board of County Commissioners, enjoy an extremely high credit rating. And thus, the cost of borrowing, the interest rate that you pay on borrowed money is much lower than most any other government. Your financial advisor told you, you had one of the best credit ratings in the state of Florida. You have, quote, "as good as it gets." AAA by Moody's and Fitch, AA plus on your utility side. And that is in part because of the stewardship you have held over the public funds and because of the amount of money you keep in reserves. If you begin to lower the amount you have in reserves, you will get the attention of the credit markets and you would face the possibility of them lowering your credit rating. And that would increase the, your interest cost for future borrowings. And if you weren't planning on borrowing any money in the future, you would say, so what? But we know that we're going to be borrowing money for 44th Avenue. And the uptick in the interest rate could cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years for that borrowing. So it's. So it's, it's prudent, I would suggest, to stay the course with your current policy on the 20% reserve. And any dipping into that ought to be looked at very seriously. And for how long would you do that? And how would you explain that to the credit markets to avoid any credit blip?
May I do a follow-up, Madam Chair?
Of course.
Getting back to Commissioner Benak's comments, and she's correct. We're gonna need to do something soon. And it been stated if the referendum does not pass, we decide to move forward with it, we're gonna have to make these decisions. Credit rating or no credit rating. We're gonna have to do some allure services. We, we're not gonna be able to have it both ways. In fact, this year, we may have to do something. The sheriff has asked, and I agree with the public comments that day. And, you know, I've been one of the ones scrutinizing the sheriff's budget, so allow me to say that. But that's a minimum amount of money that he's requesting. And if you're going to look through the budget that we have before us, this commissioner is looking to support the full amount that he asked this year. And I'm not backing off of that. I think it's much needed for him. And the fact is, there's certain things he needs to do as a constitutional officer with his six months he has left. And he needs to know that he has that money available for him. As you know, when administration leaves, there are certain things that the sheriff needs to do in making changes, arrangements, and things that he needs to take care of before he transfer his authority to a new sheriff. So certainly with us going to the holidays and different days coming up, the 4th and the summer coming up, he will have more free times to make these decisions. Basically, right now, he can't make those decisions until he sees what kind of money he's got coming in. And he needs to make these decisions before he leaves January. So that's why I'm adamant of the fact that I'm supporting the full amount that he's asking for, and me seeing his deputies out in the community and doing their job, I think is deserving. And so I, I wanted to say that. We're dealing with over $4 million that we pull, and as the mayor mentioned, some of them we maybe for discussion. But for me, for the sheriff department, it's not much additional discussion to me. I had time to study his full budget for this year. And actually, it's not the total amount that he was even asking, I don't believe, when we first received the letter. And so I'm going to support that. And hopefully, we can move forward that as soon as possible. And I understand flagging and everything, and that's why my, my position was that that's something we should have took care of. If the board want to say, based on the fact, if he finds the money, but what if he doesn't find the money? I mean, I'm supporting that figure. And so I don't know what we're gonna have to do to finance that, but I'm willing to make that difficult decision. If you keep watching on what going on on TV, keep looking at the situation with law enforcement, the threat that they have, and the stress that they go through, I think it's a minimum what he's asking for us. And certainly with this budget here, I think that's something that we need to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Whitmore?
Well, off the top of my head, the only thing that I can figure out in our budget today where we could do it is if, and we'd have to do it forever, and it, because it's recurring, and you're looking at $900,000 right now, was take our reserves. And we get $1.2 million, and we'd be living on $300,000 reserves for right now without affecting everything else. You know, if the board's okay with that. I know that we don't ever use the whole amount, but that's just something off the top of my head. But it is standard government practice for a healthy reserve to, in case of a disaster. And I know we're, some of us are from other cities, that Braintree Beach always outshined all the cities years ago. They had over 50% of, because they want you to have a six-months operating budget. And I knew, in case of a disaster or some bad event happened.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and I remember Braintree Beach outshined every city in Manatee County for years. But I think with the downturn and recession, that, they lost all that, but
It's still high.
Yeah, it's still high. But, so we have to have that because of a hurricane, you gotta pay, you know, until you get reimbursed by FEMA. That's the kind of stuff why you had to have it. Also, our bond rating so that we can borrow in case of some kind of emergencies. And, you know, government has to stop, and we have to still pay our employees and all. So hopefully, we don't cut that back. But, you know, that's an idea. I mean, you can give your reserves and then live on $300,000 every year because it is recurring. That's something easy and simple and, you know. We'll have to have a look at it without crashing the budget.
Add a question on that. When, I know in, in recent years, we've had to take money that we had put aside because of the economy and the shape that it was in. I mean, do you have any idea how much perhaps we spent? I don't, I don't know. That, to keep, you know, to be able to keep the services that we had for the public in the recession, approximately how much do you think we had to spend out of the Budget Stabilization Fund?
It was $80 million at one point.
I don't know how much it was.
Wasn't it $80 million at one point?
I know it was a lot, but I don't know.
I don't know off the top of my head. We could take a look at that, but it has probably been $50 to $60 million.
Yeah, I figured.
And now we're down to $14 million.
So it, it, it's a scary subject to talk about lowering our reserves, because
Ours is only $1.2. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It's certain that we have the quality of life for the citizens.
It's an option, you could do that.
Commissioner De Sabatino?
Yeah, I know Jan's been super, super busy, so it's an understatement. Have you had time to equate what the figure is? Okay. So you'll get back to us what that would mean? Yes, ma'am. Millage-wise, household-wise, and so forth. Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Benak?
Well, I want to follow up on your question. So, millage-wise, all that, is that to handle all $4 million of this? Or is it just a portion that you'd ask for?
They give you a whole menu, and you get to pick and choose.
Jan looks confused. I think you need to clarify that.
We will have for you a series of decision points that will give you options for what, how you might want to approach this.
Including what Commissioner Whitmore just said with regards to the
Our commissioners' reserves.
Commission reserves of
Yes.
I don't have a problem throwing that into the mix.
What was that?
Just our $1.2 million that's for us every year, the board's reserves?
I'm sorry, I wasn't
Well, I'm on the board, right?
I was reading something.
Yes. I missed the conversation.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I asked a question about what Robin said. I want to make sure, and I, I understand now. But I will tell you that this commission has lived off reserves
You know.
for
Been on the board.
For as long as I've been on the board, and since the recession. It's, I know it's not called reserves, it's the Budget Stabilization Fund. But it was money that was there. You look like you've got to say something. Correct me maybe?
There's two different
All of these are reoccurring expenses. They will show up every year.
Right.
You use the reserves, that's one time. Fund these things one time, then you'd have to cut them. So you, you need a revenue stream that's reoccurring every year.
Right. You know, I don't have any appetite for digging into the reserves that we have to fund more programs. You know, we're gonna have to, you know, tighten the belt a bit. We can't do everything. Yes, we need to provide for public safety. But, and I, that was my point. And we can't just continue to act and grow and grow and grow the government. It just doesn't make any sense. We're going, that's why I said yesterday, we're gonna have to do some things differently. You know, we're gonna have to start thinking about how we can do things differently. So, you know, the, the sales tax would put us equal to what our neighboring communities are. Gives us a revenue source that is, I mean, I heard the president of a Tea Party say at a meeting that I was at, "Half a cent's not gonna kill anybody." Now, it wasn't our president of our Tea Party, but it was up in Hillsborough County. And the guy comes to our Tea Bar to meeting every time with a red T-shirt on, and they were talking about something up there. And he said, "I can even say that this is president of the Tea Party." Wasn't our Tea Party, but I heard him say, "A half a cent's not gonna kill anyone." So we, if you look at the revenues, our comparisons, we're still very, very low compared to everywhere else. But if we keep talking like this, that we're gonna now have to dig into our reserves, or we're gonna raise the ad valorem, then we're talking a different game. And I feel very uncomfortable when we start talking about that. So, you know, it, it is a challenge, and we live in a growing community. And I would like to point out, our impact fees in 2017 are gonna be at the 90% of the maximum, which was our recommended level to go to, that 90%, to give us a little bit of flexibility in case we've erred somewhere in the study. So that's, it's not like we're, you know, shorting anyone when it comes to impact fees. So we, you know, we gotta be careful as we go down this line. I know how hard it is when we listen to everybody come forward and, and all the things that everyone's looking for. But, you know, the reality is, maybe we can't fund everything that everybody's looking for. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when you look at the reserve situation, you're talking about a one-time shot. And the referendum is for November. We need all hands on deck to get this referendum passed. Certainly, we need the Sheriff Department on hand to get this passed. And so many people who's advocating the passing of this referendum, the better it is. And so my, my suggestion is we talking about one time, and you're correct. Referendum passed, property, if it went up $15 million, let's say if it's $16 or $20 million next year, we don't know. Hopefully, it continue to rise. But I'm saying for this, this time right here, that's something we need to seriously consider. Unless the county administrator can find this type of money somewhere else without going into reserves, I don't know. I don't know all the different funding counts we have. We talk about 150. Just don't know how we're going to be able to do it. But what I do know is that we're gonna have to make a tough decision this year. And I'm willing to make it and stand by my decision in the best interest of public safety. I do know that we look at the situation and, until we make the 911 phone call, then we understand a little different what we need. And I think reasonably what's taking place right now is something that we're going to have to go ahead and move forward and make a decision. I threw reserves out there, that's not increasing taxes or doing anything from that standpoint. We talk about 20%. Counties our size, I don't know if they do 15%. We saying bond rating and things like that. It's a good suggestion. I don't have anything other than what I know now dealing with the situation that we have with our funds. But we've got to get to the referendum, and we got to hope and pray that it pass. The quicker we start to make these tough decisions, the quicker we can start advocating for the referendum. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bussell?
I don't want to be argumentative or really even get into a debate, but I'm really curious as to what you mean when you say we can't continue growing government? Because we haven't been growing government. In fact, we've reduced government by 30%, I believe it is. And we've never increased it from that. Now, we, you, you may say we got $15 million more than we had last year, but that's $15 million that you apply to the items that you paid for with Budget Stabilization Fund last time.
Right.
That's a good point.
You're not, you're not really growing government. And, and it's a little early to get excited and start talking about spending reserves and other drastic measures because we're not there yet. We, we've got a lot of water that's coming toward the dam, and hopefully, it'll go on over without incident.
I like that.
But I have to say, though, that we, we're all elected and paid to make those tough decisions, so it's not any surprise. And, and we've made them before, and people before us have made them. And people along after us will make the same kind of tough decisions. If it all comes down to it, then we're, I, I hesitate to, to blatantly, you know, just state emphatically that I won't do something because, you know, that makes you have to back down whenever the time comes.
Not gonna be this year for me.
Well, it's because you're running.
No, it's not. I've always said that. Commissioner, I've said that every year that I've been on this
I know, and last night you said you supported his budget last year. You didn't vote for the extra ad valorem.
Actually
I didn't mean to start a
That's okay, I can
A little bit of a
I can take care of myself.
discussion here because
Always do.
For me, I'd, I'd like to wait until I've got everything on the table that I can use to make a decision. And if all else fails, then we'll do what we have to do.
It is true.
No, it's not.
Go back and look at the
Commissioner Whitmore, you're after.
Okay, I think I messed up. And then after this, I'll hopefully finish soon because I need a Pepsid really bad, my stomach. But I meant the board reserves for contingency. Ever since I've been up here, we've been holding up $1.2 million every year. Now, if we can suck it up and just live with $300,000, because it's $900,000. I know, he's having heartburn, he may need the Pepsid now. But that is a reoccurring, that is a reoccurring reserve ever since I've been up here. We've always had it on the books since 2007, when Ed started the budget, or maybe 2008. We've always had $1.2 million, we've never spent it all.
Who knows?
Yeah, I mean, we, we funded Rabonia this year through it. See, that's the only problem. We'd only have $300,000 when issues come up, and that may be an issue. But that is a way that he doesn't have to look to cut other places if you guys decide it. So I messed up. I didn't mean reserves with the county reserves. I can, I still want them 20%. No, I don't think some did.
No, we knew.
So I, it's a contingency reserve.
It is a reserve, it is a one-time revenue.
It's recurring.
Nope, nope.
You do it every year.
But you carry forward what we don't
Carry forward from the year before. You spend it one time and it's gone.
Right. You put it in every year.
Commissioner Benak?
Thank you. And, and look at the things we've been able to fund with that reserves.
I know.
We've been able to fund the summer program at Rabonia. You know, we've been able to fund, we really want to take away that flexibility that we have on an annual basis when things come up? That sounds ridiculous to me, that we would take that flexibility. Boy, everybody wants to talk all at the same time. I asked a question.
Everybody quiet, let, let Commissioner Benak speak.
I really would not want to go there, but I want to reply to Commissioner Bussell. And, and I was thinking ahead. I, I shouldn't have said continue to grow government, that does sound like a tagline. But what I heard through this process was very scary to me. I heard almost, well, all of the departments that have run through general revenue were all saying they need more people.
That's because the need has, the need has grown.
Right.
The need has grown.
So you got 40,000 more people.
But our revenues, the $15 million, is, the, the revenue has grown, and it's not keeping up with it. So at some point, you're gonna have to raise the revenue or do things differently. Is there a way to do things differently?
Yes.
Let's talk about it August 2nd.
Thank you. Thank you, right answer.
All right, let's see. Commissioner Chape?
Yeah, and, and I, I think over the years, our staff and department heads have, have done a lot of things to be more efficient in the way they operate their different departments through, through IT. You know, Jan was talking about that today, and the other departments were doing the same thing. There's, there's been a lot of things
Cross-training.
Cross-training. A lot of examples over the years that, that we've, we've done more with less people. With, and, and the technology, the new technology has helped us accomplish that. Look at the building department and all that they go through. It's incredible stuff. You can interrupt me.
No, we're not going there.
We all love each other.
I said, "Thank you."
So, yeah, there's a lot of examples.
Are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, your turn.
Thank, I said, "Thank you for bringing up the building department," because I was gonna bring that up. And I actually brought up the cross-training yesterday as well.
Yes, you did.
I kept getting counted to you. But I, I was the one that said it because when I was listening to Ron talk and thinking about how difficult it is to be in that world where people have jobs that are very tough, outside jobs, you're gonna, we're gonna have to do it differently. We're doing a great job with our millennials, trying to get them engaged and wanting to do things. And it's a new generation. They don't necessarily want to do it for the same reasons we want to do it. And so that's why I'm talking about doing things differently.
And so that's why I'm talking about doing things differently. And your example of what John Barnard's been able to do in the building department has been transformative. They've been able to cross-train, people like working there, people like working with them. It is a very positive story, so that's, and I know we're gonna be innovative and do things different. And I'll end on that now.
John?
Okay, I'm on the board. To just go back to last year for a moment, I did not vote for the budget last year. And if you'll recall, the reason I did not was because we were taking several million out of reserves for health care rather than giving the money to the sheriff. So I didn't vote for the budget last year. Just thought I'd bring that up. Commissioner Benak?
Yeah, and since you brought up health care, the health care number that we have, 6.9 million, does not all go to the hospitals. In fact...
3.3 of it only does.
Yeah, only 3.3 million. And I would encourage anyone to go down there and sit in that emergency room and see the folks that come into that and then criticize them for whatever reason. I think they do an incredible job. Even though they are a for-profit hospital, they take care of the people in this community, and I think they do quite an incredible job. And they, they do, they do so much more than they get paid for, quite frankly. And that money goes to great programs that we've been able to do with Turning Point. We get so much leverage off that money. And compare it, compare it to being what's spent in Sarasota, in Hillsborough, 10 times as much. So I get it that people get upset that there's any money apparently in for health care, but it is something that is comparatively, is nothing compared to what our neighbors spend. And we've been able to do it because of the partnerships that we have. The doctors provide so much, so much free health care. Just talk to any of them and they can tell you about the free health care they provide. So I get it, everybody thinks that, you know, we shouldn't have to spend anything. Well, I think that's unrealistic.
That's not what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about, I was talking to Glenn, I wasn't talking to you, but...
That's not what I said.
You're not on the board.
I know, you took me off. I don't have anyone else on the board, so if there isn't anything else this meeting...
I was, I had a question.
I didn't take you off.
Okay. Question?
No, you didn't either.
Question for Jan. The Palm Air MSTU, I had written down, .2546. So you multiply that times their taxable value and that's roughly that line item, what that costs?
Yes, ma'am. It's by the, it's segregated by the property appraiser for just that area.
So, an example of a $200,000 taxable value home in Palm Air, that's taking off all their deductions, that's $50.92 a year. Am I right?
Yeah, I can calculate it real quick.
So they've opted to tax themselves to keep up their infrastructure and their, all their landscaping. It looks beautiful. So, you know, that's another avenue where we've been talking about it and talking about it, and we need to really, you know, take the bull by the horns with this and reach out and have a, you know, campaign to reach out to the neighborhoods because if they want to beautify their areas, it helps their values and it helps us. So, you know, if you're gonna be spending money...
You.
Excuse me?
Nothing, I was just pointing to Dan Schlant. He has a lot of experience working with the MSTUs.
Yeah, so, you know, we really need to step up that game and work with Keep Manatee Beautiful and so on and so forth. One good news is, again, thanks to John Barnard and his team, I heard that Harvey will be closing hopefully by the end of this month. And he stepped that up. And so then, in that 30-day window, that 31-day window, he's cool. And he'll be the owner, so kudos to him.
End of this month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
So we did something right. Yay!
Yeah.
All right, no one else is on the board, this meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
Oh, sorry.